Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, February 7th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of the individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, opening comments. I'll save them for afterwards, is that okay?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Approval of January 24th and January 31st, Boston. Boston, B-O-S, Meeting Minutes, Boston. I was looking up flights from Boston, that's why I said it. Before you say that, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
I'd like to, on the 24th meeting, the notes from the 24th meeting, on page two, it says, "Mr. Taylor stated to the town administrator that we should have more meetings scheduled with Northeastern." And I want to add, "to work on compromises and inform the public after the meetings on what was accomplished." I want to add, "to work on compromises." I'm still compromising in spite of that meeting. And the next line is, "Mr. Lombard stated that he met with the Northeastern team only one time, and he is not in favor of any expansion." Okay, after that, I want to add the following sentence, and I want this for the record, because it is going to be election time soon. "Mr. Lombard stated that the chairman has been having secret meetings with Northeastern University." I want that in the record, I want the town to hear that, and that's it, I want it. So those are my two updates, and I will now move that we approve both sets of meeting minutes with the updates.
Okay, I'll...
Unless you have some.
No. I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of January 3rd, 2019, and January 24th, 2019, with the updated...
With the two updates.
Two updates in it, because that was discussed, there was a lot more discussed than that.
There was a lot more, yes.
But that would be fine.
And it fits.
Right.
And I want an official record, so. I'll second further discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Citizens Forum.
Hi. Christian Bowder, 3 Swale Cave Road. Susan Solomon and Alice Court are both out of town tonight, so they couldn't be here, but they wanted to say a few words and ask me to deliver it on their behalf. So they both received copies of Northeastern's responses to the questions that they provided, obviously. They reviewed those in detail. They find the answers raise a lot of additional issues, and they will be preparing a follow-up list of those concerns as their time permits, and they will plan to make this publicly available to both you and to the public when, once that's finished. That's it from them. Just a question from me, I'm wondering if you guys have had a chance to review the questions yourselves, and if you had any, or the answers rather, if you had any thoughts or feedback on, from your own perspectives. Thank you.
I mean, I looked at all the questions and answers. If they have follow-up questions, you know, whatever they want, I guess, they can certainly ask. I have some questions for Susan, Dr. Solomon, that I will share with her when she, when will she be back? Are they part of Keepin' Hot Wild?
Oh, they're not.
Oh, they're not? Okay. Okay. Because I have a couple of questions for Keepin' Hot Wild additionally, so I'll ask them later. My answer to that is, I reviewed everything. I think it's terrific that they're putting together more questions. My first time through, I read it. I'm into my second time through, and I'm proposing questions too. I probably will get two-thirds of what they do, but I will, we will use them, definitely. And I thank them. Thank you. New business?
New business, well...
Of new business?
No, there isn't, but can, I just want to... Okay, so, we have a need for clarification on the, on who's, not so to speak, in charge, but who, what authority is given to the town for rights-of-ways. I'm getting an awful lot of calls that there's rights-of-ways, and there's a couple that have been taken away. I don't see how you can build a wall on a right-of-way if it's over your, over the line, and then, and get away with it. And I'm talking about Little Nahat Road and Wilson Road, and that has to be opened up. So my suggestion is, the first thing we do is, we had rights-of-way signs, they were red, and they were put up all over town where there was a right-of-way. Why they disappeared, I don't know. I would like to get one back up in Little Nahat, especially Little Nahat, right on that wall, and it's a, it's a public right-of-way. They cannot be taken away, they shouldn't be taken away, and someone's responsible for it, whether it's the Planning Board, the Building Department, the Board of Selectmen. But we need to have a meeting with everybody included, including the Building Inspector, including the ZBA, including, a public meeting, including all the different boards, to find out who exactly is, has the authority, and how we clarify it, and how do we move forward to open these rights-of-ways back up? Because it's, it's, they just cannot be taken away. Because it's, it's going to come to a point where there's going to be arguments about it. And we don't need any more legal fees, and any more legal battles in Nahat. What we need to do is just say, "No, you don't own it, you shouldn't have put the wall there, take it down." Or, put the sign there, and people can walk on the wall, or whatever. I, I don't know what the answer is, but it's got to be done. And that goes for Big Nahat?
That was my next thing. Big Nahat, there were areas...
I'll let you take it from here.
There were areas that were just taken over. People moved in bushes, planted grass, and there's no, it's a right-of-way. And I have, there is, there are maps of right-of-ways, rights-of-way, and we have to, it has to be enforced. We have to...
Yes.
I think it's the Board of Selectmen that should make the next move.
Well, we can, but who do we use? Who do we tell that they're going to go out there and, and, well, the DPW can put those signs back up. We have them somewhere. They all disappeared, and whether people pull them out, I don't know, but it's illegal to do that. Put them back up. Order a new, sell them, order new signs, and put them back up. We'll go around, and we'll place them there. Simple as that.
Okay.
I'll talk to the DPW superintendent about adding signage back in those areas. I think that unfortunately, I would assume that dealing with encroachment issues would require bringing in an attorney and, you know, issuing some type of letter to the folks who are responsible for those encroachments, so I think that, I can, I can do a little bit more research on it.
Who's KP, well, and, you know, and the thing is, moving forward, this is going to turn into a nightmare, and if we don't spend the money now, which might be very little, it's going to turn into a big, big amount of money. Because I see, I've talked to a couple of my constituents every morning, when are you going to open them up? Whether it's, I don't know who's, it's our authority, we can tell them to take them down, to move it, but we have to enforce it, and enforce it the right way, is what I might, I guess what I'm driving at.
We should probably bring, we should probably bring the assessor into the conversation as well.
Assessor and Town Council.
Town Council.
I say the Planning Board. Two years ago, we brought this up.
Right.
Planning Board should be part of it. Actually, three.
Yeah. That when you first got on, yeah.
And we have to.
Right.
Town Administrator reports, snow and ice.
Yes, before I get to snow and ice, I just wanted to talk quickly about, yesterday we had a water main break on Willow Road in between summer and winter. It happened late in the evening, and water was turned off throughout the night. We, it was a pretty extensive break, you know, the, why, why it happened, we don't know, but we documented all of that, you know, and these things, this, you know, it's another example of the aging infrastructure that we have in this town, and, you know, we're lucky that we were able, that it was resolved in the time that it did, and that it was a water break, we could contain it. There was a, National Grid did have to come on site, because, you know, once we started digging, we smelled gas in the air, so they came and resolved that issue. But I do want to thank the crews that worked throughout the night. It was cold, it was wet out, and they worked throughout the night, right into today and yesterday, so they've been going for a long time. And I also want to thank the residents that were impacted by the water main break for their patience, and we tried to provide updates as much as we could throughout the night, and as we got information. Snow and ice, I just wanted, so typically, the Municipal Modernization Act, the Municipal Modernization Act changed the law requiring approval for excess spending on snow and ice. So I have here, Chapter 44, Section 31D of this, of the general law, and the top paragraph there is what it used to say, bottom paragraph is what it says now. And the language that is cut, cut there talks about providing that such expenditures are approved by the town manager and the finance or advisory committee in a town having a town manager, by the selectmen and the finance or advisory committee in any other town, by the city manager and the city council in a city having a city manager, or by the mayor and city council in any other city. So in other words, what they did here was, they cut the, that approval process out of the law, so I think in the past, the practice in town in Nahat has been to go through that process every time we spent, I think, I want to say like $10,000, increments of $10,000, more than what we had appropriated for snow and ice. So while we don't need to go through a process of approval, I did want to let you know that we have 30,000 appropriated in snow and ice, and at this time, we have, we've spent 41,000. Luckily, you know, given that it's February, that's relatively low compared to previous years. We've had a pretty good winter so far, and we're prepared for the next storm, but we have spent, we have overspent in that, in that budget by $11,480 at this point. This is an account that you are allowed to overspend in, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, everyone, you know, that you are aware, and the town is aware where we are with that budget, and even though we don't, we don't need to go through the process of an approval.
Right. And I understand that, but I think it's nice that we, you know...
Still make it public. I agree. The next thing in my list was to talk about the town budget. I, you know, my intention was to have the budget prepared to be voted on tonight by the Board of Selectmen, so that it could be sent to the Finance Committee. You know, I do think that, you know, I prefer that Selectman Lombard would be here for that vote, that all three of you have an opportunity to review it before you vote on it, before we send it to the FinCom. I do have it pretty much completed at this point, however, I met with the FinCom last night. I do think that there are some adjustments that I might be, might be making, and I do want to talk, I have a couple more conversations I want to have with department heads as well. So I anticipate that we will be voting on this next week. Of course, you know, every year, last year especially, given the transition, this process was delayed, and I understand, you know, that the FinCom has a job to do in a very little period of time, so apologies. We are working as quickly and, as we can to get the budget finalized, so you guys can vote on it and get it to the FinCom as soon as possible. That's all I have.
Now, in the course of that, would you need us, could we come up during the week?
Absolutely. Individually, of course.
Individually, so, yeah, but I mean, could we come up to get a bird's eye view, so you could, you could get it to them Thursday night, right after we vote on it?
Absol-
Or could we vote on it by going into your office and approving it?
No, you, we have to vote it, we have to vote it here.
Okay.
But that's, that's the plan, is, as soon as I, after I, I want to double-check a couple of things, I want to talk to department heads once more, then I want to meet with you individually to give you a briefing of what the budget says, and then we can talk about it, add a Board of Select meeting, vote on it, and then send it to the FinCom.
Okay. Do we, are we going to sit down and talk with the department heads? We should probably bring the department heads in to explain their budget, probably, you know? Well, we've always done that. Yeah, no kidding, but my opinion is, we have a town administrator who should do it. That's his job. I, I think we should not get involved in that. He comes before us, and we go yea and nay on the full budget and stuff. Well, I just, it's just to let people know that what they want, what... I know my first year here, we met for three hours with the department heads, and it wasn't our job.
I think I've received a pretty good deal of direction from the board at this point, and I've gone, and, you know, and now it's just a matter of going back and forth between the two, so, you know, I...
I would like to meet with the department heads, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Because I want, I want them to explain their budgets to me, period, you know, to me, personally, if that's okay.
Sure. I mean, this is, yeah. Yeah, we can do that. But again, we're trying to, time is of the essence, the FinCom needs to get the budget as soon as possible, so I do want to be mindful of that.
Very good. Nothing, nothing. I think the Advisory and Finance Committee work real, real hard, and they should get this budget as soon as possible. But the reality is, it's a tough year, and we have to, you know, I mean, we'll get it to them as quickly as we can, I think that's important.
I'm not saying hold it up, I just want to hear what they have to say, that's all.
Yeah.
So I know what I'm, you know...
Yeah.
I want to know what's going on.
I, my hope and goal is to improve this process next year, so that we are...
Oh, sure.
We are getting the budget to them in a much faster...
January 31st.
You know...
I mean, it's two weeks late, that's, if it's next week, that's, that's, I'd still like to hit January 31st every year. But keep up the good work. Okay, Coast Guard Housing Committee. This is, this is Peter Barber, he's chairman of the Coast Guard Housing Committee. Thank you. If you could get...
Some members in the back.
Hi, committee members, thank you. Could you give us an update, please?
Sure.
Actually, the whole town. The whole town has been asking and asking.
Absolutely. We are close. We are finalizing our options. We've been collecting data sets to kind of determine what the best option is, both short-term and long-term, for the town. We do plan on having probably, well, hopefully, either later in February or in March, having a public hearing, more of an informational thing, to let people, you know, know what we've been doing, see what we've been doing, and let the, you know, let them ask questions, and I think we've been very thorough. It's, it's been difficult, we've had some members change hands, FinCom, and most recently, we had a member that stepped down because he doesn't have the time. So we're working hard. All of our meetings get posted, they're open meetings, we invite people to come in, listen to what we're doing. Essentially, we, we started with a wide range of options for the town. We've looked at all of the options, we've discussed all the options, we've done research, you know, on all the options, to try and figure out financially what's the best option. The, the one thing that I will say is, is one of our criterias is ability to execute. And the ability to execute is the ability to basically have the town vote to move forward with a proposal. If, we can come up with the greatest plan in the world, but if town meeting, you know, shoots it down, it isn't worth a hill of beans. So we're trying to, you know, we, we look at everything and say, "All right, if we, you know, if we like this idea, can it, do you think that the town would, would approve it?" So that's what we've been doing.
Are you looking for this April meeting to put something on?
We, we hope to be able to give the town meeting, you know, present a town meeting options, or an option, or it may be more than one option, based on what we discover.
To vote on?
Yeah. I mean, we've, so we've, we've brought in real estate experts, actually, just this weekend, I spoke to a developer to get some information. One of the, I will tell you, one of the things that we have done as a committee, we have voted to go to the Planning Board for a zoning overlay, and I know everybody gets kind of nervous about a zoning overlay. The immediate rebutt is to that neighborhood have a 23% floor area ratio, and we would like to put in an overlay that this property stays within that 23%, with an ability for, you know, like an additional 5% if people needed, you know, handicap ramps or other things like that. The idea is, the message that we've heard from townspeople at town meeting is, we don't want this site overdeveloped. We use the term McMansions, we use, you know, condo development, things like that. We know that's not what the town wants. Again, the ability to execute, it's not going to happen if we present something a large scale. Yeah, it'd be great, we're going to make all kinds of tax revenue, money, and things down the road, but if nobody likes the project, it's not going to happen, so.
Right.
So we do, we are, I, we need to put a letter together to send to the Planning Committee. I've already reached out to Mr. Schneider and spoken to him about it, and essentially, you know, that may be part of the, part of the warrant on town meeting is voting for that overlay.
I do like that idea, the zoning overlay, 23% or 25%.
Yeah.
Because it's, that's a great idea, and I think the last one we had with the overlay was too complicated, and that's what people, why people voted.
And quite frankly, that's what we looked at, what is the simplest way to...
Complicated, right.
And, and not to give, you know, too much of the presentation away or anything, but right now, one of the, the, we've, we've gone to a surveyor, in case people don't know, it's one piece of property right now, it's one piece of property with 12 dwellings. Any way we slice it up, we get, you know, we've looked at 10,000 square foot buildable lots, because essentially, that's what people are going to want, or that's what we'll, you know, end up selling. One of those lots, at the end, near the golf court, golf course, ends up to be around 16,000 square feet. According to current zoning bylaws, right now, with that piece of property, somebody could build a house, I think it's around 7,400 square feet. So that's why, you know, yeah, it's a big house, and again, we're going to get great tax revenue, but if nobody wants a huge house like that in the neighborhood, then it's not going to, again, ability to execute, so.
I mean, can they, you can, well, I don't want to overstep, because you guys are dealing with it, but you could give the golf course a portion of that, the town a portion of that.
So, yeah, we could, and actually, in the plan, so it's kind of strange, there is a, it's a, works out to 30.9 feet of property, that kind of, it's part of the little pathway that you take in the golf cart, is actually part of this property. So in the plan, we plan on giving that little section of land back to, or letting the town retain it as part of the golf course. It's a slope, it's overgrown with brush, it's not like you, it's not something that's worth a lot of money or anything, it's just, it squares off the property. The other thing that we looked at is the, the Heritage Trail. So right now, it's a right-of-way, and you guys were talking about right-of-ways earlier. One of the problems is, it's a right-of-way, but it goes through people's backyards.
I know.
I don't know about you, but I don't really, wouldn't want people, I'm having a family barbecue, and all these people are hiking through my backyard, so one of, so the, again, one of the thoughts is that we're going to create, or we're going to keep, I don't know if it's a 15-foot wide path, and then maybe propose that the town, like, plant some hedges along that, so that, you know, folks on either side would have privacy.
Right.
So...
Have you thought about presenting things at town meeting, and then requiring a special town meeting after that? Give people time to think?
Well, that's why we were thinking about having a hearing.
Or the hearing first.
Having a hearing first, let, let, you know, people to talk about it, have a few, maybe, open meetings afterwards, so that people could come and ask questions.
Okay.
We're, that's what we're hoping, is that we're going to get the information out ahead of time, so that people, we know there's going to be questions at town meeting, maybe some people don't make the hearing, but try and limit the, limit the discussion, and limit it to a little bit at town meeting, but a lot more at a hearing.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
There's a lot, you guys have a lot, a lot of things on the plate for town meeting this year, so.
I'll just, the warrant has to be posted by 14 days prior to town meeting.
Right.
So that'll be April 13th, and of course, well, the warrant shouldn't be too much to, to print, but keep that date in mind...
Yeah, we...
As far as getting an article added on to the town warrant.
Yeah, we've actually set up, like, deadlines, and we're trying to work back from, we have duty from the FinComs on our committee, so.
And we'll also throw it in there, to give it to us. But this, we can open and close.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Great.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, good job. Great job.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, I know. I know. On, for next week on the, on the budget, Mr. Town Administrator?
Mm-hmm.
If, if you could, in the notes from the 24th, on the Town Administrator report, there's a terrific overview that probably most of the town missed. I think we should, I will, I will get into it, introducing it unless you want to, but would you look at those minutes? And, and we'll start with that at the next meeting, on why, why it's important?
Are tho, you mean, are those, is that my script? Is that the...
Yes, this is exactly what you said.
My transcript?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I, I've, I'm in the...
Just to reiterate, because I've been talking, and people in town, basically saying this.
The, the, I'm, I am hoping to, not only that night when we vote on the budget, to send it to the FinCom, but nights following that, be presenting, you know, parts of that as we go, as we lead up, because there is a lot to talk about in, in the budget, and there's, and there's, it takes some time to be able to present it properly, so absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to put together a, a presentation that either we can have for that night next week, but certainly afterwards as well. That include, you know, that, that transcript is included in, in that.
Right. Right. I, I think it's nice. I was going to actually read parts of it tonight, but I, I think it, if you don't get to it, I will on the next meeting, because the town needs to hear this. It's not about getting this and trying to do that, it's about, we're in trouble.
Well, things, price, things go up, I mean, there's not much we can... I mean, there's not much we can.
Closing arguments? Do you have any arguments?
No arguments.
Oh, it's announcements. Well, you're such an arguer, I figured, you know, closing arguments.
That's not true.
Closing arguments. Any announcements?
You have the gall, you have the gallows.
No, I have none. You just use your hand real quick. Any announcements? You came in late. Would you like to say something? No?
I was just looking to see what the outcome of, what the status of the Coast Guard discussion was and what, if anything, would be presented at town meeting.
Oh, for the Coast Guard Housing.
It sounded like they, it sounded like they are hoping to have some sort of public hearing, they said, end of February or in March to present their findings and hope that that would result in some type of vote to be included at town meeting.
Okay, so just with our, Ken Corangelo, Eighty-one Willow Road. So I guess the formal question would be, is it within the purview of the Board of Selectmen to charge that committee with specific deadlines? In other words, to, not necessarily require, but specify like by this date, we would like to have a hearing, by this date, we would like to have a special town meeting?
I offered a special town meeting if they did not get that far. They're trying to get something ready for this town meeting. But the deadline is February, March, which is soon, for an information meeting to get everybody thinking.
Sure.
And then we said we would keep, we would open up the warrant any time that they had a, an article on the Coast Guard Housing that they feel can be expedited. The ability to execute was their, their big line, that the town can go far. And so the town will vote to move forward.
Okay.
It, it sort of fit, I asked them about, can you get to, do you want us to just have options on the town meeting and then a special town meeting later? But they said, no, he, he would rather have the board meet February, March, a big informational meeting to get ready to have something for special, for the town meeting.
Okay. Okay, understood. And based on discussions we had in the FinCom yesterday, it was just unclear whether they would actually be able to be ready, also with financials for various options within whatever timeframe.
Correct.
And understanding that that committee is working very hard as they have been. But again, without any sort of definitive deadline, there's nothing, I mean, it, it could always just be continued and extended. So that's why I was wondering, is, can we have the Selectmen just specify a target date for either a special time meeting or actually a date by which the special time meeting that would decide the, the ultimate outcome would be had?
I would.
And they can work backwards.
Just, because I was going to say something, that's why I had asked Peter, are they going to be ready for town meeting? And he said they, they should. I was going to suggest that we have a special time meeting. We could have a special time meeting right after. We can call a special time meeting for that any time. And I think it's important that if they're not ready for town meeting, that we tell them that we're going to have a special time meeting and, you know, at a certain time after the town meeting to do it, to, to get that squared away. Because I think time is on our side. If the market starts to tumble, if, if it goes to a developer, if that's their option and the vote, town votes on it, we don't want the same thing to happen as happened last time. I want it done. I want it gone. We don't need, we need to pay off that one point eight million dollar debt we're paying that we don't pay, we pay an interest only loan. I want that gone, and I want some money. You know, we want, the town needs the money, period.
What you want to finance, what you want to, something to work with.
We, the finance, speaking on behalf of me, not the Finance Committee, but as a, as a citizen, I would like to know the financial implications of whatever options they do present, which will take some time to develop. But also know that, again, there's no, the, the only real deadline to any, anything within the town is really the town meeting. That's the one date that really doesn't move. And if they're able to get stuff ready so that the town can actually digest and act on it by town meeting, then great. If not, I guess I would just ask that the Selectmen specify a deadline date for a special time meeting, and then they can work backwards from that and work with the FinCom and whoever else.
May I, may I just, I, I would, I would, I think what we need to do is take a look at the language that established that committee, because I don't think the Board of Selectmen did. I believe it was established at a town meeting.
It was.
So I don't know if you technically have authority to implement a deadline. You could obviously request one, and then they could try to meet it. But I would want to just double check that established language if they actually have authority to hold them to a certain date.
But I think where we made the appointments, well, we, hold on a minute. We, we will look into that. But I agree, we need, we need to know.
And whether or not it's, 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 you know, forced by the legal authority of whatever was voted on, and I don't recall the language myself. But even if it's just the public statement of we would like an answer by such and such a date, right, that in itself carries weight coming from you all.
Yes.
So.
I agree.
That's all. I just wanted to, we need to bring this to a head, to your point, the market is going to pop at some point, and we don't want to be in the same situation, you know, ten years from now, looking at it again.
What would, what date would be most helpful to the FinCom? I know you're not speaking on behalf of the FinCom, but.
And again, I mean, under ideal conditions, in time for the already scheduled town meeting, I, I don't, and I missed the first part of Peter's presentation, so I apologize. So I, I don't know if they're at a state that they'll be able to have it that fleshed out and have had a public hearing and do all that by April. That's a very, that's very aggressive, right? If that's not the case, I would argue, say sixty or ninety days after, have that be, have that be the target.
I brought that up to him, and he seemed to think that his committee would be ready in February, March. So, okay, then, and if they're not ready, then we will.
That's what I would request.
Correct.
Yep.
One thing that, you know, and this is, not to change the subject, but we've, if you look at other communities, and we've talked about this, they have their regularly annual town meeting in April, but they also have the budget meeting in, in November. And that's not a bad idea. Maybe we could be looking at that because a budget.
Well, we could do both. I mean, the, I mean, the, the, the cost and just the logistics of having a second town meeting, whether it's just about the budget or anything else, is obviously a factor, right? The, the mass, DLS, I forget what that stands for, but the, the state, when they did their recommendations about the town's finances and such, did recommend that the town meeting be moved later in the year so that we do have things like the cherry sheets and the budgets and the actuals in place. So, and again, just from a process perspective, we as Finance Committee, but also citizens, like there's not a lot of time between January and when the book has to go out in March to do anything.
Right.
So I.
Unless you don't know how much money you're going to get, it's better later.
That actually came up last night at the meet, at the, at the FinCom meeting. And I am looking into what would be required to change the date. I believe it's a, it depends if it's in our charter or bylaw, I take a look at that. But it might actually require a, a town meeting vote. So it is something that we could throw on the warrant for this town meeting so that next year's is perhaps a little bit later, maybe in June, May, so that we can, and, and I know that, I know the.
We need to have a shot at commissioner on this town meeting warrant also.
But I know, I, I would want to also consult with the town clerk and the town moderator as well.
Actually, the town clerk called me a little while ago and let me know that there's an awful lot of stuff she's learning at this meeting, so, you know, so that she's, she's away. And that she has some good information for you and us.
But we need to know. Advisory and Finance Committee, citizens and Board of Selectmen need, we have to have something definitive, I would think, by mid-March. How, how can we, how can anybody, mid-March, next thing you know, it's an April vacation, you know? As you said. So I did broach that with him about a special town meeting, and he just figured they could make it without that. But I think we should, if, if there's not something definitive by end of February, Town Administrator will keep in touch with him, one of us, then we got to say, whoa, back up the, back up the buses, because.
We certainly can't afford to wait another year until next year's town meeting. And again, without, without something declaring, you know, here's what it has to be, it, there's no, there's nothing stopping it from rolling over into April of 2020. So.
Yeah.
If we could not do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, might as well get it done. It's been, it's been a long time, though, and a lot of people have wanted. Sorry. But we will know. I think it's better that we, we know by this time next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Any more closing arguments? Oh, sorry, announcements.
No, I think they'll argue later.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Seven forty.